Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
All right, we have full attendance this evening. And moving along to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the October 2020. My question meeting, is there any additions, subtractions, corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been approved or moved by Commissioner Fatisi and seconded by Commissioner Freiberger to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General public comments, since we're in the Zoom world at the moment, was there any written comments that were received that need to be read into the record at all? John's MIA.
We received a written comment for the public hearing for the rezone. I'm not sure if you would read that during the hearing or now.
That would be read into the record during the public hearing. This would just be general comments, so. All right, perfect. Thank you. So that being said, moving along to tonight's public hearings, we have two of them on the agenda, one regarding a rezone on North Reed Street, and then also a second one regarding changes to the CBD Central Business District parking requirements. We will begin with the rezone of number CPA Tac 3 Tac 20, city-owned property at 205 North Reed Street, proposal to change the zoning designation of roughly 2.67 acres of land from residential seven to public. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:36 PM. And if I remember correctly, this one actually does have the public comments in it. Catherine, was there any additional comments received after the sending out of these?
Yes, so after we sent in the report, we received one more comment on November 13th at 2:30, 2:23 PM. And I will read it now. The North Central Brickyard Creek Community Association, NCBCA, would like to take this opportunity to express support of proposed zoning designation of 2.7 acre city-owned parcel 205 North Reed Street from residential seven to public. The NCBCA represents 80 residential lot owners north of the parcel being discussed. There are many multifamily residences, two modular home parks, and a subsidized low-income apartment complex within walking distance of this public open space, with more building to come along John Leonard Jones Road development. A characteristic of a livable community is to have adequate public space, adequate public open space for its citizens. This will be a good place slash space for seedy kids, seniors, and families to recreate. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, NCBCA Board members Dale C. Waldo, Wardle, Mike Bryan, Melinda Bryan, and Rodney Piercy. I hope I said all those names right.
Excellent, thank you. And then we received two other public comments. One was more of a question, I guess, from Mr. Timothy Epps. He emailed Catherine on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 at 1:18 PM, stating, I received notice about zoning change.
You don't need to, you don't need to read the rest of them into the packet, into the record. They're already included with the memo.
Okay. Good to know. We read them into the record for school board, so I was just going off of.
Well, these, these have all been available to the public for the past seven, six, or five days or so. And they're already published, and you've had the chance to read them ahead of time. So there's no need to read them in, just like we don't read them in.
Perfect.
When it's a non-Zoom meeting.
So in that case, there was two other public comments that are part of the record here. And with that, I will go ahead and I will close the meeting, the public hearing.
There, there's, there's still people online here that are, have the opportunity to speak. We do, we do.
So we do allow? Is that something added?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Can't see anybody, so I'm assuming that Catherine would be able to.
Yes, I'm checking the participants now. We have.
Carl DeYoung, and we can go down the list and just see if anybody would like to speak to this. So we'll just start with going down the list and see if Councilman Carl DeYoung wants to speak.
Thank you, Director Coleman, and thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your work, and I am here as an observer. Thank you so much for your hard work for the city.
All right, thank you, Carl. KL, do you wish to comment regarding this matter? Are they able to unmute themselves, or?
I've allowed them to talk, so they, if they'd like, they can unmute, but I'm not seeing them unmute, so.
In that case, I will move along to Linda Markovits. Linda, do you want to comment on this matter? Not hearing anything. Tim Epps, who are you? What's that?
Oh, sorry.
Tim Epps, I know that.
Yes, I'm, sent that email. And my, I am definitely for a park that's excellent use for it, and like the letter you read, it's good use to have a park in that area because of so many residential. But my biggest concern is the drainage issues regarding that area and how it impacts my land and adjacent properties on Central. Just like to make sure that the drainage issues are fixed and addressed on any development that is related to the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. And then, don't have a name for you, but whoever's at 360-941-7971.
That's, that's Michelle.
Okay.
Our permit tech.
Good to know, thank you.
She's taking minutes via her phone.
All right. Seen no other attendees and no one wanting to make any further comment. I will go ahead and I will close the public hearing at 6:43 PM. So with public comment closed, John, is there any further things you want to present to the board before we discuss?
Well, I could just point out a few things. When the city originally purchased the property, it was, it was a really good deal, and there was some drainage issues in the area. And so the city had the opportunity to buy it with the goal of using the property, taking care of some of the drainage issues on it. So hopefully, it's been better for Mr. Epps and the neighbors in that area, and that's something that our Public Works Department will continue to address. That, that is a goal, to make sure that the drainage does continue to work in that area. And it was always imagined that this property could be a park, and it's already included in the capital facilities element, I'm sorry, in the Parks and Recreation element as a, listed as a possible park area. So now the council discussed needs for parks earlier this year, and they identified this spot is not just a likely spot, but a spot that they would really like to use for, to, for park. So that is why it was brought to the Planning Commission for the rezone issues. It's also, had never been rezoned because it never really was an issue since the property wasn't used, and there had been some, there had been some discussion in the past at the council level to possibly sell this property for housing, various developers and home builders have approached the city in the past, and that also sort of spurred the council to say, no, we really, we really feel like this should be a park, and that's how we got to where we are right now. And it's, it's 2.6 acres, 2.7, 2.67 acres, so it's not, not envisioned to be like a giant park like Riverfront Park or anything like that, but more of a, I believe I said this is a neighborhood park size. So it would just be kind of serving the area, not the entire city. Did I say neighborhood? I want to make sure I get this right. Size of the property makes sure the line could be a community park. Okay, so community parks are a little bit larger than neighborhood parks, and they serve kind of like the a regional area, or as a community park, or, or I'm sorry, a neighborhood park would gee, just for like a subdivision, or, you know, a couple of subdivisions. But there, there's nothing major planned here. It's not big enough for sports fields or anything like that. It's envisioned more of, you know, some trails and some open space and some picnic benches, and there is a wetland there, so the discussion in the past has been to maintain it as a wetland, and maybe, you know, puts an interpretive signs up, and that, that's, that was the, the vision in the past, and that's what the Parks and Rec element alludes to. And that's really about it. Not much more to say about it. Unless there's any questions.
Any questions or discussions? Yes, Commissioner Silas.
Well, I, just that being said, I'd just like to go ahead and get this started and make a motion that the City Council approves amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning maps proposed in CPA 3-20 to change the zoning designation of assessors parcels P126653 and P126654 from the residential seven zoning designation to the public zoning designation.
I second.
Spoiler. That's okay, I, I just.
It's a no-brainer to me. Sorry, Matt.
All right. So it's been moved by Commissioner Maddox to recommend that the City Council approve the amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning maps proposed in 7PA Tac 3 Tac 20 to change the zoning designation of assessors parcels P126653 and P126654 from the residential seven zone zoning designation to the public zoning designation. And then seconded by Commissioner Fatisi. Is there any further discussion?
Can we co-second?
With that?
I said, can we do a co-second with Commissioner Huggins?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Ticking right along. Moving to the second public hearing, the proposed amendments to Title 17 of the Seedy County Municipal Code zoning to address parking requirements in the Central Business District. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:49 PM.
Would you like staff to speak before? People, we generally give a staff presentation before we ask people to speak, so that they have a better understanding of what the proposal is. But you can do it however you like.
If you want to go ahead and speak, feel free to do so.
I'll go like Catherine.
Okay, so we've been looking at, I wasn't sure if you were talking to me. We've been looking at the parking code for the CBD, the Central Business District. And in addressing concerns that the city-owned parking will be negatively impacted by development that goes under the current code. We've addressed this by proposing sort of a tiered system, and we've narrowed it down to two tiers with two separate tables for inside the boundary and outside the boundary. And the boundary is now described in 1724 Seedy County Municipal Code, the Central Business District. So, and we've simplified the tier descriptions as well, in case in a situation arose where a building had 4,000 square feet of new commercial and then 10 residential units, so there's just a threshold for those separately. Instead of just having them be stuck in tier one versus tier two, if that makes sense. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Catherine. All right. So there was no public comment included with the packet. Was there, Catherine, was there any written statements received after submission?
We did not receive any written comments, no.
All right, thank you. So we will then proceed to the attendees for tonight. Carl DeYoung, I know you're, you said you were an observer on the last one. Are you still just an observer on this one, or do you want to comment on it?
Chair Johnson, thank you for the opportunity. I'm also observing here. Thank you again, and I reiterate all the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Mr. Epps, are you, excuse me, are you wishing to comment regarding this matter?
No comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Epps. Seen no further members of the public present.
Well, there's Linda Markovits.
There we, there we go.
Hi, I'm new, so I'm just observing. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Welcome.
But my mom grew up in Ocean Grove, Joe.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Thank you.
Kick it away from people from Jersey.
Thank you, Linda. All right. And that looks like everybody then. Now I will close at 6:54 PM. Moving along to discussion with the Planning Commission, is there any comments or questions that the Planning Commission has regarding this matter?
I had a simplification comment, and I'll run this out to John and Catherine. On tier one and two, okay, which is fine. Why are we even mentioning square footage on the commercial space? Okay, because it doesn't really matter, because at the, at the end of the day, outside of retail and restaurant, it's still going to be based upon 17.36, right? So regardless of the number of residential units, which would definitely, you know, factor into, you know, parking requirements. As far as the commercial goes, why are we even putting a number in there, right? It is, it's either a mixed use, or it's not, because 4,000.
When it's, when it's commercial, yeah, inside the blue line, there's, there's different, different requirements.
Right, only if we have retail and restaurant, correct? But it's still, it's still going to be 17.36 for any other commercial use based upon what those calculations are. So I guess, and the original comment was, for simplification, okay, why are we even mentioning square footage? Because it's going to be predicated on that, regardless of how many square feet that's in there anyway, outside of the retail and the restaurant, outside of the blue line, I believe, right?
Well, the, so the chart, the way it was put in chart format or table format was done to keep it simple, because there's, there's a lot, there's some moving pieces to it, and so it's just, it's just makes it very clear this way. For us to change the format of, you know, one of the tiers, you know, all that, so your change would only affect the tier, like if, if we, we would just change it to say, straight up, 17.36 instead of.
Correct, yeah. Why even mention a, a number on 4,000 plus or minus?
But that wouldn't, but that wouldn't be the case in all of this. So if we're going to have, if we're going to have a size difference, differentiation in one tier, then we should explain it in the other one, both inside and out. We're trying to keep consistent between the, the, the chart that addresses inside the line and a chart that addresses outside of the line. So it's really just for consistency's sake.
However, it only matters, and I'm looking at page eight here. It only matters when we throw a retail and restaurant component, right? It doesn't change the requirements for 17.36 per se, regardless of the square footage, right? Or, or am I wrong? And I guess, again, my original comment was, why even bother to put 4,000 in there? Because it's either commercial space, the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Because the first 4,000, we, is kind of a giveaway. Like if it's below 4,000, we're trying to make it easier for the property to provide commercial space. Once you get over 4,000 square feet, it starts to be a pretty big commercial space that's going to have a larger impact. So we wanted to, wanted to be clear that when it's below 4,000, the restrictions are less than when they're above 4,000. And it, it just makes it to read easier to keep it in the similar format in, in the two sections.
Okay, and in that second section, the differential is retail and restaurant use, where you have a 4,000 plus commercial, well, mixed-use allotment, right?
Right, yeah. So in the, in the second, in the second one, which is under, under number two.
Right.
On page eight, yeah, that one, that one's the one where there's a difference between 4,000 square feet above and below for the, you're, you're right in the one under number one, where if you're 4,000 square feet of commercial, it's standard parking requirements, and it's also standard parking requirements for over 4,000 square feet. Now, we could go and monkey around and say, you know, remove the 4,000 just under section one there, but we're just trying to keep it consistent.
Yeah, I was just looking for an easier read, because I do see the different differential on page eight, right? Whereby we now split it out to a retail restaurant that doesn't have the impact, and then it's like for any other commercial use afterwards. So I just thought it was, you know, because when I see square footage, you know, I get caught up in visualizing 4,000 square feet, because that's the world I live in. So on page seven, it just didn't make any sense to even put a number in there, simply for the fact that it doesn't matter, right? I mean, you're still, regardless of the, the commercial requirement, it's still going to be 17.36, whether it's 8,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. The bottom line, we have a mixed-use building with a residential component, as well as commercial components. It's only one.
Well.
Page eight, no?
It's also, it's also, it's not just, it's, it's not just for mixed-use buildings. So this would also apply, say, somebody was just doing a commercial building. It would also apply, so that's why, that's why they're separated in bullets. It's either or. If you have a new building with 10 or fewer residential units, then you need to, you know, follow these rules, or if you have 4,000 square feet or less, then you follow these rules, but then tier two is if you have more than 11 residential units or more than 4,000 square feet of commercial.
But it's the same on the commercial side, regardless if it's, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I'm reading it, regardless whether it's 4,000 or not.
It doesn't really matter under section one, but just for consistency with section two, we, we left it in.
I'm fine with that. That's an explanation, but I did look at it like, okay, it doesn't matter, really. I'm fine with that. Thank you. Anybody else? See, I read it.
Thank you. Commissioner Frenette?
Yeah, this is to John. At one point, you said you were going to get comments from developers. Did that ever happen, or?
I, I sent it out to one of the local developers, and they didn't get any comments back to us.
Okay.
Developers are busy these days.
Yeah. So are septic guys.
They're always busy.
There any further comments from the commission? Any further questions that anybody might have for Catherine or John on this matter?
I've said before, I'm totally on board with the concept, and I trust that between the other eight of you, or whatever, seven of you, that the math is, the math is right, and we'll see it again. If it, if it's wrong, we'll, we'll have it back as soon as something happens. So anyway, I'm, I'm raring to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Huggins.
I also just think it has really turned out pretty well and is about as concise as it can be, so, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Pennon?
I'm good with it. I've been since the last meeting.
I'm good with it. I've been since the last meeting.
Commissioner Maddox, I'm guessing from your head nod, you're the same. Yeah. All right. That being the case, if there's no further comments or questions. Put it out there one more time. If not, I will entertain a motion to. Approve.
Would someone like to read it off? I mean, I could do it. Okay, I make a motion to recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to Title seventeen dot two, four. And seventeen, seventeen dot three, six, Sidereally Municipal Code. To address the impacts of new development, the city owned parking in the CBD.
There a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Fatisi and seconded by Commissioner Fernet. To recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to Title seventeen point two, four. And seventeen three, six of the Sidereally Municipal Code to address the impacts of new development. On the city owned parking in the central business district. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Was that unanimous or did I hear a nay?
You heard a yay from me instead of, yeah.
Yeah. The opinion of the chair was that it was unanimous. So that. Ends our public hearing. There's currently no unfinished business. No new business that. Needs to be added or addressed. Are there any? Comments or information for the good of the order that anybody on staff or commission would like to? Share with the group as a whole?
Hey, John, this is just a general question. We're already into December. What do you see coming up in two thousand and twenty one that potentially we should? Now take a walk around town or something that you see. Coming our way in the new year that from what? From where you sit, that, that, that might be a priority, you know, community wise, council wise. Can you give us a heads up or are we walking into two thousand and twenty one with a pretty? Open agenda?
Oh, we've got things. So first, I hate to correct you, but it's still just, it's still just November.
It's all brother.
I think we all want it to be December so we can get this year over.
We're not sure what, what the December planning commission has in store quite yet. We've got a couple of things brewing. Catherine maybe wants to speak to. We're working on our shoreline master program, which we'll have to go to the planning commission. But we'll be calling you instead of the planning commission. You'll be the shoreline review committee or something like that. Some of you may remember when we did this back in two thousand fifteen or so. We, we brought some changes. To the planning commission to review as the shoreline is born. So we'll be, we're in that process again. I'm not sure if we'll be bringing anything in December or not. We'd like to be able to. But that's yet to be seen. Catherine, do you have any comments on that?
I think you covered it pretty well. We have the shoreline master plan coming up. That's kind of the main one and then. Nothing concrete that I can speak of right now.
And I've been talking with. One council member who's. Going to be requesting. The planning committee of the council to recommend that the planning commission work on the small. The review of one certain section of our design standards. But that still has to go to committee and then go, then council determine if they want to send the issue to. The planning commission. So I can't speak to whether or not. We'll be seeing that, but. If it goes through council, then that probably won't happen until January because with the holidays, things. Get backed up. So there's, there's an outside chance that there may not be a December meeting or much on the agenda. Does, does the planning commission have any concerns about possibly skipping the December meeting?
No.
Nobody will be heartbroken if, if that's the case now. Don't get your hopes up though, because we may find, we may have something for you still. But.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, those are, those are the pending items right now.
I had a question, Eric. So I was, I was just kind of following up on, I think Joe's question there that, so are we staying on track? With getting our, all of our comprehensive plan things done so that we're not all jammed up at, at the end of five years? You know. Just in general, we, do we always get in like one thing a done a year and, and is there anything on the docket for next year other than the shoreline?
Yeah, so we're working, shorelines are due in June of this, of two twenty twenty one. So staff's going to be spending time on that. Today is the finishing up of the annual twenty twenty one, twenty twenty docket. And we have advertisement out for the requests for the twenty twenty one docket. We'll. Probably get that kicked off in March or. April or so. That's typically when we, we start that process. And then Commissioner Huggins was talking about the. The Growth Management Act required. Updates, which we do every eight years or so. The, the legislature says eight years and then, you know, every time there's a. Economic meltdown, they back it off a year or so. So I'm trying to recall, it was last due in twenty sixteen when we did the full update of our comprehensive plan. And so the next one would be twenty twenty four, but I think it was pushed back to twenty twenty five. So. With the Skagit Council of Governments, we have a planner group where all of the planners from the jurisdictions get together. And we work on. The population projections. And population estimates and, you know, what, what we, what we look. Forward to, you know, growth wise over the twenty years. And we haven't started that process yet. We're probably not going to get that till twenty twenty two. Since that's, you know, still three years before it's due. So we've got till twenty twenty five. So there's, there's no urgency for us to start reviewing. Any segments of our capital, of our comprehensive plan quite yet. That's a good point. I'll think about it and, you know, maybe, maybe there's room in twenty twenty one to do something easy like the. Public utilities element, something that doesn't. Isn't. One of the bigger ones. We do a little warm up, but I kind of suspect we may wait till twenty twenty two once we start getting the ball rolling on. Our population projections.
I, I hadn't realized that they had switched it to eight. It used to be five and so, yeah, we're not jammed up at all. That's, that's awesome.
It used to be seven, maybe it's twenty twenty four. I'm, I could look it up real quick, but it's either twenty four or twenty five, but I'm pretty confident that we're not starting the update process. With the Skagit Council of Governments until twenty twenty two. So it's just a little early if our population projections, you know, a lot of these elements, you need the population projections, like the land use element. You can't do until you know what your twenty thirty six, so it'd be a twenty. Forty five, twenty, twenty forty four, population projections would be. So can't do the land use element. You could probably do the parks and rec. Capital facilities, it's a little tough to do without those population projections. The housing, you don't really want to do without the, the, without the population projections. So. We'll probably wait a little bit, but thank you for the reminder and we'll definitely think about it.
Okay, thank you, John.
Just a housekeeping question. So I know we had originally needed to do an update with our iPads and I thought I saw. Email from Bill. Are we needing to all have our iPads into him? Around Monday morning, Monday in general?
Uh, what did he say?
Yeah, by the twenty third, I think he said, Monday.
Whatever Bill says. He was intending to have it. Okay, so he requested that the iPads and other city mobile devices. Be turned in by the morning of the twenty third. So if you want to start bringing them in now, for those who. Haven't already. Then he will make them available beginning Monday, November thirtieth.
So, John, do I need to bring my name again?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody who brought theirs in, thank you. The work didn't, they, they weren't able to get it done. The, they had trouble with the, the. Internet server connect. Some IT thing, I don't know.
So even, so even mine, I just picked mine up today.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, you needed it for tonight, but.
Yeah. So I just bring, bring it back this next week.
Yeah, they were unable to get, they were unable to, to make the upgrades.
Okay.
Perfect. Any other, yes, Commissioner Maddox?
Are, are we just supposed to email Bill or call him or something to drop it off or where are we dropping these off?
Yeah, you can give it to me or to Bill. You can just give me a call and I'll grab it for me at the front door.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to thank you and Joe for, Joe, Joe Fatisi for doing such a great job of running. Virtual meetings. This has been awesome. And I know John and Catherine, you guys have also worked really, really hard to, to make this happen and Bill. But anyway, great job of, of running these meetings remotely and we may be the whole year of your term with. Remotely this time. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, big thank you to Commissioner Fatisi for filling in for me for those few months that I was, I was out. So big thank you.
You have bigger priorities.
Well, the only other thing that I would have is with Thanksgiving coming up, I wish you all a very happy, healthy, safe. Thanksgiving. Hope you all are and your families are doing well and COVID free and flu free and. Whatever other bugs might be out there. So best of, best wishes to you all over the, this next holiday weekend. And over the course of the next month and hopefully we will see everybody potentially in December. So if there's no other items. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somebody decides me. I'll make a motion that we adjourn because I can't do parks.
I'll second.
Perfect. So I have a motion from Commissioner Huggins and a second by Commissioner Freiber to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are adjourned at seven sixteen PM. Thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.